I know everybody by the last two digits of their phone number.
Now we do.
It's now seven o'clock.
Okay, then we'll get started. All right, good evening, folks. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March 17th, 2021, and happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm David Tellingwood, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I'm joined by fellow supervisors, Mr. Jim Miller, the Vice Chair, and member, Mr. Jay Kaiser. I'll call tonight's meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Through the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded at its conclusion. Excuse me, will be recorded at its conclusion. Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the Township YouTube channel. A link to that meeting can be found on the Township's website at www westrockhill township.org. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be following the West Rock Hill Township policies for public meetings, and the rules that apply is listed on page two of the meeting agenda. Are there any public comments on agenda items as listed? If so, please state your name and address. Hearing none, we'll go on to announcements. We had an executive session this evening to discuss legal matters. An executive session will follow tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the February 17th, 2021, meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, the emergency services report, the building zoning and building permit report, the public works report, the conservation committee report, the treasures report, and payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott, would you review the treasures report?
Sure, the treasures report for February 28th, 2021. The general fund has $645,497.53. Highway aid, $78,092. Open space, $1,073,591.62. The park fund, $30,080.72. The equipment fund, $15,860.41. Highway capital, $129.53. Street light, $33,402.11. General fund reserve, $395,941.73. Open space manor field, $51,377.48. Sewage maintenance fund, $180,854.92. Stormwater fund, $6,564.46. And the escrow funds, $2,364,053.25.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll say, I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, approve the motion by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is approved. We will, we have no confirmed appointments this evening, so we'll move on to committee reports. The first committee report would be the Planning Commission Report. Mr. Chris Durstein.
All right, good evening, everyone. Planning Commission met last Tuesday. We had no applicants, so we used the time to discuss the street design standards that we had started discussing at the last board meeting. As you recall, we've, we've had three applicants, our past three applicants have all come in with cul-de-sac designs that exceeded our, our requirements of 800 feet. And generally, all planning commission members agreed that anything over 800 feet, we wanted to see some type of emergency access or exit. So we basically reconfirmed that last week. Steve had provided some, some other municipalities' regulations, and we're generally in, in keeping with, with surrounding neighborhoods. They vary slightly, but we're, we're all pretty much on, on the same, same type of requirements. So what we, what we came up with was, you know, all planning commission members, again, we, we agreed that if someone's coming in with a cul-de-sac design, that's, that's longer than 800 feet, we want to see some type of maintained access, exit, that is capable of emergency vehicle traffic. So Steve was, Steve pretty much got the gist of what we were looking for, and he was going to, you know, come up with some language to insert into the saddle at some point, once we can agree on what that language is gonna be. And that was really all we discussed. I mean, it was, there was a lot of discussion about this, but that's basically the, the end result. So we'll, we'll see how things move forward. We'll wait to see what Steve brings back for. And Steve, if Steve, you have any comments on that? Might be beneficial.
Well, I think that was a good summary. Yeah, we'll, we'll suggest some language. And I think, I guess the only other thing might be to note is we talked about some more general language in New Orleans somewhere about two entrances for all types of developments. Right now, it's only memorialized for age-qualified communities. So we might try to add language to.
All right, that's it, Chris?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I say that's it?
Yeah, that's all I have. You guys have any questions? I'll try and answer them. If not, that's my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
Well, I attended the meeting. I thought it was a really good discussion. I was, I was happy to see progress being made, so that's all I have to say. It was good.
Great. Thank you.
I don't have any. I have none.
All right, so, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Planning Commission Report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and I will second it. All those in favor, approve the motion by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. We'll now move on to the park and rec report. Chairman Dave Rice.
All right, I come off meat first. All right, everybody's ready for the park and rec report. All right, here we go. Still having a fishing derby scheduled for April 24th. We're gonna look to dedicate this year's fishing derby to all the years of service to Charlie Gents. We're gonna look for approval to plant a bench. It's gonna be similar to the one that we just had planted for John Mann on the opposite side of the pond for Charlie. That would be what I would be looking for to seek approval for that. We'd also be looking to seek approval for a plaque above the bird blind, or I guess it's the bird blind. That would say Gents, his last name, apostrophe S, Grotto, G R O T T O. Since he was part of, you know, the fishing derby, invested a whole lot of time in building and being part of the fishing derby, as well as his years of service. We'd like to get those two items approved for this year's fishing derby, as well as, you know, have this year's fishing derby dedicated to Charlie. So we'd like to say a couple of words on that day, on that day. Suzanne had taken a walk around the pond, found there's 690 feet of space, so we can socially distance. Greg said he would allow the public works to mark off six-foot spots, so we could tentatively have 115 broken-down little pieces socially distant. So we would be able to cover and have the fishing derby as such, as in past years, just a little bit different than years in the past. Obviously, the same protocols to follow as all events in the park. We're looking to movie in a park to, we're gonna focus on August 21st. I got a tentative approval from the same gentleman, Jason, to get approval and rotary to have the movie in a park on that Saturday evening, right around the same time, just at dusk. We're still looking forward to move with, forward with September Fest. That's gonna be September 26th. That's the last Sunday in September. Probably gonna be scaled back. We're gonna have to follow the protocols that we need to follow as well. There's still, still discussions going on with the Little League and Greg in regards to that. I have a couple other comments. Jim, I do have a question in regards to Get Fit with a Doc. I was doing a lot of thinking after we had Verizon issues back and forth. Get Fit with a Doc, you're familiar with it, right? You started with Grandview Hospital?
Yeah, I still, I still interface with them for that. Yeah, they're not having it this year, Dave?
Oh, they're not?
No, they, they've canceled for this year. They're gonna start it up again next year.
Okay, and that was pretty similar to what? Couple times a month and then a couple months a year?
It's twice a month through the spring, summer, and fall.
Okay, because I was thinking of something as I was doing some brainstorming. How can we get more kids to the park? So I was thinking Get Fit with, Get Fit with the Kids. Something different that we get kids to the park. We utilize the park. We struggled last year in 2020 to get outside, be, you know, they were not socially active as much as they probably should have been, little community effort. So we can hopefully publicize that and get some kids to take part in different parts of the park. I mean, there's just so much, so many things that kids can be out there doing with different, you know, community projects and different organizations. So I feel it's important. My question was, would it be possible to get the same cost allocation as Get Fit with a Doc? As far as, you know?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. You and I can talk about that. I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but if you want to work with Grandview on that, then I can set that up, or we can do it on our own. And I think the Get Fit with a Doc, they bring in doctors to actually talk about what's going on and, and, you know, healthcare and, and heart problems, and they all kinds, every, every, you know, asthma, health issue, you know, all different kinds of health issues that, like, they're struggling for all the different kinds right now. But they do that. I don't know that you would want something like that for Get Fit with Kids, but we could, we could sit down and talk, for sure.
Okay, and is that something that, you know, so I'm just thinking, because it would obviously be a community effort to, you know, can we do something where it's like, you know, no cost, like Get Fit with a Doc, because we had, you know, so it's just that way, wherever they had their entities, or that wherever they were located, it would be kind of free and clear?
Yep, we can work on that.
Because I, I didn't see anything for rental income, so that's why I was like, okay, well, it probably didn't cost anything. So that's why I'm like, okay, well, maybe this is a good thing. So nobody's actually gonna have to pay to go to that. I thought it was a great idea. And it's gonna get the kids out. It's 2021. They, they gotta get outside. Their mental health's really taking a toll.
Right, right. The cost of all that, they, they would bring things for the walkers and, and the food. They'd bring water and, and it was, it was a very good event, and we'll pick it up again next year, but you're right. I mean, we, we partnered with Grandview on that, and Grandview assumed all the cost.
Okay, all right, that's cool. That, I mean, I, I was just trying to think of how we get the kids to the park, because I mean, it seems to be the best avenue. I mean, we, we gotta get them out there. I mean, the kids gotta get outside and gotta get, you know, rejuvenated with their, you know, with kid out there and the, you know, with the nice weather, especially last week. That kind of gave us a, an idea of, you know, got my brain working. Didn't help with Verizon at the meeting. It was down, but other than that, it was a good park and rec meeting. Went pretty quick, because it was kind of, we had some, you know, issues with Verizon that evening. Other than that, I think we are good to go.
All right, I'm gonna have to bring this up again, Dave. We don't have a policy in place for the township to buy benches for people. I understand his, I understand Charlie's decades of service that he's given to the township. Charlie, or he was a good friend. But, but there are a lot of other people that have given decades of service too, and are we gonna consider them? I mean, not now, but maybe in the future. I mean, Jeff Markley, years and years of service, and, and we, we didn't put a bench in for him. People that are still with us, but have also given, you know, years and years, decades and decades of service. People like Bob Strobel, Amy Shermer, Chris Durstein, Don DeVall, Jay Kaiser, all these people have given years of service. We don't have a policy or a procedure in place to buy people benches
Okay.
in Memorial. So I, I don't know what, I don't, where we go with this.
So the only thing I, that was my apologies. I forgot to say, I did recognize in the meeting, in the park and rec meeting, I did say I would donate the bench. So I will purchase it. I actually spoke to oh, my, the, the mind, Palini's. I did talk to them. They do have a bench on hand. I told them I would speak to them if I got approval that we could plant it, I would purchase it. So that way you'd have it. We'd, we'd be looking to put, like I say, the plaque that would be above the bird blind. That would be something that we would have to look to, to fund. But I don't see that as a huge cost. It'd probably be a nice big piece of wood, and it would be burned in Gents Grotto.
Yeah. Dave, what, what was the style of that bench? Is that the one that's?
Same one as John's.
The one like John's?
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I had on it.
Thank you.
Jay, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I'm open to, to whatever the park and rec would like to do. I do, I do know that we don't have a policy in place. But I do also share and know that, you know, I spent a lot of time with Charlie, as well as everybody else. And he has dedicated a lot of time to the community. I honestly don't think it would, it would hurt anything by doing this if, if the funds could be, even, even if some, some money was taken out of the park and rec. We have money there, obviously. If something like this were to be done. And I would support whatever the park and rec committee would like to do in this matter. That's all I have to say.
Okay. My comment is Charlie was a good friend of mine, and, and, and I think it's, I applaud Rec for wanting to do this for Charlie. The one concern I have is, is is the number of benches in the park and, and the fact that they are a maintenance issue, not only for mowing and trimming under, but also, and I know the new benches are probably of a made of recyclable materials, no last forever, but some of the ones we have right now are just, it seems like Bob Strobel or someone else is in there redoing benches, X number of benches every year. And I, I just think that long-term, we have to, we have to consider how many benches we want to put in the park and where we want to put them. And that doesn't have to be something we'll decide tonight. But I, I am certainly in favor of the the bird blind plaque and, and a bench for Charlie. But I think we need to look closely at how we move forward with this. So if there's no other comments from the board, I would look for approval to a motion to approve the bird blind, blind plaque and the bench for Charlie.
I make that motion. Okay. I'll second it.
Thank you, guys.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So, Mr. Rice, proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, and are there any other comments from the board on the park and rec report?
None from me.
I have none.
I have none. With that, I will look for a motion to approve the park and rec report.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Jay did, okay.
We have an approval. We have a second. All those in favor, aye by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on. Commission reports, police report, Chief Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The February activities for the Penridge Regional Police Department is listed in the March report for the Police Commission. The department handled 593 calls for service. Of those, 206 were in East Rock Hill, and 387 were in West Rock Hill. We handled 16 traffic crashes, five of those in East Rock Hill, 11 in West Rock Hill. Eight were reportable crashes and eight were non-reportable crashes. We handled five Part I crimes and 16 Part II crimes. The crimes in East Rock Hill as follows burglary, two theft cases, fraud case, disorderly conduct, two harassment cases, four ordinance violations, and one trespass complaint. In West Rock Hill was a burglary, theft case, fraud case, two weapons offense cases, a DUI, a terroristic threats, a dog law violation, and a trespass complaint. The charges filed in February are as follows. One charge for DUI, one charge for theft by deception, two charges for theft, one charge for receiving stolen property, one charge for possession of instrument of a crime, one charge for simple assault, one charge for carrying a firearm with no license, and one charge for recklessly endangering another person. We have conducted 145 traffic enforcement details. Thirty-four of those details in Old Beth and Pike issuing 12 citations and 21 written warnings. And officers also conducted 516 business checks. And that's the police report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have no comments.
I have none.
All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve the police report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report is approved. We'll move on to the Joint Rec Authority Report. Mr. Jim Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pool is making great progress to open this year. We were shut down last year because of COVID-19. We did a lot of work last year and in the, in the fall to fix a lot of leaks. I'm happy to say that the pools had water in it, probably four foot of water in it all winter, and I checked the leaks and there are none. All those leaks appear to have been fixed. So we are in pretty good shape, really good shape, actually. There's no waters leaking out, no waters leaking down to Winter Avenue or anywhere, so we're good. We hired just about all of our guards now, and we're looking at to add a couple of aides onto the staff, so that we have people that can do during the day, they can, they can work the front desk. They can be cleaning up because of the COVID requirements, doing things like that, and we will not be taking our lifeguards, which will be higher paid, to do items like that. Just so you know, we've got about 20 guards. Half of them, at least, have come from Quakertown, where they, they were open last year during the, the COVID crisis. So they're coming in with experience, as, as is the manager that we have this year, which is great. The other half are, are coming from Penridge, so they will be here this year and, and be learning from the other, the rest of the staff. And we assume Quakertown is going to be open again next year, so we'll lose our manager and lose those guards. So our guards will then be trained up and ready to take the lead next year. We've, I met with Kevin Hickey, our new guard, or I'm sorry, new manager, over the weekend, and we started laying out for social, a social distancing plan. So we've, we've worked on that. We have, I've been in touch with three camps that want to come in this summer, and we've determined we can take all three camps. I'm working on them, on the number of children that are coming and, and the pricing. So that's all moving along quickly. We had our trees in the parking lot that had died from Elms disease removed. That was a volunteer came in and removed the trees, but he took all the, the logs, but left the, the brush, and the perpacy rotary has volunteered to come in with a, a chipper and pick up all the, all the leftover stuff. So we're good there. We're scheduling our cleanup day. Where we will have all of our, our guards coming in and, and members of the community that have already said they wanted to volunteer and come in and help when to do that. Our memberships have been sent out to everyone we had on record. You can also get memberships off of our website. Greg has put them out on the, the West Rock Hill website, and Sellersville has them out on Sellersville's website. So you can get your, get your applications there for, for the, the season pass. And the last thing is, the plans with the Quakertown swim team are coming together. From what I'm hearing, there's a misconception that the Quakertown swim team is coming in for free, and that's, that's, that's not true. They're paying to use the pool before hours in the morning for practice. They'll be paying to use the pool when they have their meets at night. And if, if any of the members of the swim team who are not members of the pool want to come in during the day, then they have to pay the daily fee. They, they only get to use the pool during their swim team hours for their, for the current costs that we've given to the, to the swim team. So I hope that clears that up. That's all I have for right now. I think, I think we're making really good progress, considering we have still a couple of months before the, the pool's going to open. So that's it.
I have a question. Do you, with the Quakertown pool closed, do you see that you're going to have an increase in membership or increase in attendance and possibly an increase in, in dollars?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, I do.
Any other comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
Okay, with that, we have a motion to, we need a motion to approve the Joint Recreation Authority Report.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. A second? I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? The report is approved. We will now move on to the tax collectors' report. Mrs. Clark.
Okay, for the month of March, as you all know, the county and township tax bills were issued March 1st. For annual taxes, I've collected $38,350.34. In 2020 interims, I've collected $63.37. And our streetlight tax, $356.07 so far this month. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
With that, thank you, Mr. Kaiser. We'll look for a motion to approve the tax collectors' report.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The tax collectors' report is approved. We will move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Bowler.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no items on the agenda, so I'll just take a second to say update on the solar project. If you notice, there are stakes or poles out on the side of the township building towards the rear and by the more, the more driveway. That's the location for the, the panel arrays. They moved recently, because we had some concerns where the initial stakeout was, so we adjusted the stakeout, and that should be the final location. So I think Jim mentioned earlier, we're, we're waiting on some PPL authorizations before the installation will start. That's a quick update on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. So we'll assume that that was an update in our report, and we won't look for a motion to approve it. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Great. Fine, we'll move on to the solicitors' report.
Thank you very much. I have nothing to report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the Township Managers' Report. Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item to report on. After the end of our winter plowing season, James, the Public Works Director, noted that the 15-year-old plow on the 2006 International is starting to crack and bend. He can temporarily repair it, but he also got a quote for the Board of Supervisors to review. One is for $14,000, the other one is for $13,000. This is an unbudgeted expense, so I would need the board's authorization to spend the money. However, you do need three quotes before you're allowed to purchase anything. I did not know if the board wanted me to investigate it further, or if they wanted me to make it a budget item for 2022.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yes, please.
Okay, question I have, Greg, I see the, I see the invoice there, or the quote there on the, on the screen. And, and it looks, did somebody add them together to make it $28,000?
Somebody added it together. That was a mistake. That was a mistake. There are two different plows, and they added them together, because
I just wanted to make sure of that clarification.
$28,000 isn't gonna fly.
No.
So, so we would have to get more quotes.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. I, I actually had sticker shock when I saw that, so. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. I, I actually had sticker shock when I saw that, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that. I, I definitely think we need to get more quotes, um, Mr. Lippincott.
I can do that.
And I, and I think that we're in March of 21 now, so we, we need to look forward to what's gonna happen next year, so we have to be ready for next year, and if this plow is is, is, has broken and we've paid a lot of money just to repair it, to make it operable for, to get us through the season, I think it's just throwing good money after bad, that we have to look at a new plow, but I, I think in my mind, you should um get some more quotes and then we should revisit this further into the year.
I can do that.
Uh, any other comments by Mr. Miller?
I, I would agree. Um, I don't want to wait and find out in the fall, we're gonna have a big snowstorm. And, and we've got a broken plow, so, I mean, that's my opinion. I think, I think we should move forward with this and get the quotes and see where we are.
Any other comments? Uh, anything else, Mr. Lippincott?
That is all I have.
Okay, then I'll look for, if there's no more comments or questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the Managers Report.
So I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright, take a deep breath and we'll move on to old business.
I think an angel just got its wings.
Yes, do you want to s- say something?
I, well, actually, if, it might be easier if I introduce this item since in the past it's been, been under the Solicitors Report. And um, I told Greg, I thought it'd be more appropriate for old business, but now that we're here, it's probably more appropriate that I say something. For the, for the, uh, at least two of the last three meetings, you have um either heard a presentation from PRA or considered and, or discussed a, a possible ordinance which would facilitate the installation of sewers coming out the, the Ridge Road and stopping at um somewhere in the Mountain View area, maybe further, certainly no further than the bridge. And um, the question is, the question before you is whether or not to adopt an ordinance. Right now, you have a 2011 um sewer, or Water Service Agreement with um PRA which requires that you adopt a mandatory connection ordinance for failing systems and new construction, if PRA indicates that it intends to extend the sewer system. In this case, um, PRA is extending the sewer system, they're getting a grant for $200,000 and the price that they're able to offer the residents is, I guess Greg Lippincott put it this way at one point, it's in line with what the supervisors always said it, it would find acceptable for connection to a sewer system, and that is that it's about the same prices as a sand mound, maybe a little bit less. So the question is whether or not you adopt the ordinance, and tha- and that's the jumping off part for the discussion.
Are there comments that uh or questions that want to be made by anyone from the Board of Supervisors?
I would like to make one if I could.
Please.
Um, I, I asked the question of why the six houses weren't, weren't included out to the bridge from, from Mountain View, and they came back and said that they would include them. Um, they would have to pay the same fair share. I don't know that any of those residents have been notified yet. The other, the other question I have or concern um regarding this project moving forward is the fact that um, we've already given them authority to, to extend the sewer line up the Old 309, which is the Betham Pike, uh, because of the failing system at the Royanne, and they haven't done that yet. So I'm, I'm giving you my opinion um, and my feeling of why would we want to start this project when that one hasn't been completed yet? I'm just putting that out there.
And I think that possibly one of the benefits of moving forward with the, the Ridge Road project as opposed to the the, the one on Old 309 is the fact that they have this grant, which they claim is going to reduce the cost to the homeowners, and it's only applicable to the houses that they've already identified. Am I correct on that? Mary?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure where the grant is applicable to. I think what Steve Ballas told me is that the um Old 309 project is significantly more expensive, on, not only on a per unit basis, but on a, a whole project basis, because there has to be a pump station, which is, which is a significant expense all on its own. I think that the Old 309 project isn't comparable in cost to the Ridge Road project. And Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Mary, that, that's correct, and where, where it impacts the grant is, is my understanding, the grant program is only for up to a certain maximum dollar amount project, so the, the grant, while it's good for any kind of sewer project, it wouldn't work on the Old Betham Pike sewer, because the overall project is too expensive. It doesn't fall in the parameters of the grant program, and, and that's why they were looking to use it on, on Ridge Road, where it does fall into the parameters.
Miller?
Yeah, I want to hear from the residents. Um, I think if we uh authorize the advertisement of the ordinance, then we can, we can take this to a, a, a public hearing, and we can actually get hear back from the residents on their thoughts, find out what their concerns are, and I think that should be our next move.
And not only could we hear from the public, in a public hearing, not only could we hear from the residents, we could also hear from the PRA at the same time. I mean, they could, everybody could put their thoughts, concerns on the table, including some of the ones that Mr. Kaiser has, has brought up.
True.
I'm sorry, am I then? I think Mr. Kaiser's mentioned that PRA was planning to meet with the residents later in April. You could adjust your timing so that your public hearing was after the residents have, have met with PRA.
If you so. Yeah, Mary, M- Mr. Chairman, the meeting, the meeting was, was, is scheduled to be on April the 19th, 2021 at 7:00 AM. Uh, that would be, that's the meeting from PRA to the residents, okay? That had been sent letters along Ridge Road.
Correct, so if we were to have a public hearing in May, that would allow the this, the first meeting to occur between the residents and PRA in, in April. Am I correct?
Yes.
That would also give the residents, oh, go ahead, Mary.
Uh, uh, ironically, the, the the, your April meeting is April 21st, which is after that April 19th date. So you can either have it in April or May, and the residents will have already met.
They would have already met, but I think they need time to, to work through it.
I agree.
I agree. Two days is not enough.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would request that we hold, or that we authorize the ordinance for a, a public hearing in May, which gives all the residents time to talk to the, the group, also gives them time to formulate their questions. Um, it comes out, it's a public meeting, anyone can attend. I, I think uh I, I definitely want to hear their comments after they've had their meeting and had time to think about it.
Normally, when we advertise ordinances, we, we advertise them in the newspaper. I think probably in this case, it, it would be a good idea to send notices to directly of the hearing to anybody along Ridge Road in, in the affected area. Uh, if the board agrees.
I would definitely agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
And who would send those notices out? Would that be the responsibility of Mary, or with a?
Greg and I would do it.
Okay.
I'll probably do the noticing, Greg would send them out.
So, Mr. Miller, um, what you, you've actually basically made a motion then to authorize the, to advertise the ordinance?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to advertise the ordinance.
Republic hearing could be scheduled in May.
In May, yes.
Do I have a second to that? I would second that. Any other discussion by the board? Then let's have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Mary, you have a directive there, we can move forward.
I wrote it down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any other old business? With that, we'll move on to new business.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, then we'll move on to uh public comment. If you have something to say, you have two and a half minutes and you have to please state your name and address. And I'll start with Mr. Lippincott. Do we have anything in the form of email?
No emails this evening.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. With that said, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening, people. Thanks for attending.
Good night, everyone. Good night.